Mr. Carroll.
Present.
Mr. Stigl.
Here.
Mr. O’Curry.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
Present.
Here.
Mr. Coeser.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
For our joint assembly of the ladies.
May I continue to the flag of the United States of America and to the great bond of the British Americans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start our agenda, I would ask that we have a moment of silence for Pat Erhardt, who is our long-serving member of our recreation committee. Pat joined the recreation committee in 2006. Spent an awfully long time in Peters Township. If you could spend a moment, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes from the September 27 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion on it?
One correction, Mr. Chairman. Page 12 of the transcript, lines 15 and 16, I didn't enunciate, the word should be just about when I referred to the plan.
Good. Any other corrections? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second is the approval of the minutes of the council meeting held on October 11.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, special reports.
Council would ask that I invite the chief back to speak about the deer calling program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is not, sir. It is not. Just here tonight to answer any questions you may have in regards to the deer calling program and how we intend to, or how we are proposing to move forward and advance the program from its current state of simply an archery program to an archery and a sharpshooting program. With the continued construction of new homes and development of new homes in the township, we continue to take away the space that the deer occupy, which creates an issue that even without taking away that space, has been an issue. And as we continue to develop, we create less and less space and habitat for the deer to be, to live in and to thrive in. We've had an increased number of deer calls where deer are in distress within developments where they've tried to go over a fence and they become impaled on the fence, which is certainly not humane. In addition to that, deer car collisions, in addition to that, the damage that they cause in and around homes in the township. So, we wanted to propose an opportunity to council to consider the sharpshooter program, and we did that a few weeks ago. I'm just here with Officer, excuse me, Sergeant Burnett and Officer Stevick to answer any questions you may have in regards to the archery program, how we got here where we are today, and the sharpshooter program where we'd like, or where we are proposing that you consider we go.
I appreciate you coming. I was one of the ones who was looking for some background on the archery program and to try to understand when you said that it wasn't being effective. And you gave us a lot of data, thank you very much for providing all of that. In looking at that, right now, according to your records, you have 29 archers, and there's been a high of 50 and a low of 27. And it seems to me, according to the averages, there's about every archer gets two deer. That's not true for the, because there's an individual who was quite prolific as far as shooting more than others. What do you think happened that the numbers have dropped? Because if you had more, I would think you could obviously call more deer.
Well, and I'm gonna have Officer Stevick and Sergeant Burnett come up.
Come on up.
At this point in time, but, and they can chime in here whenever they want, but
They're free to step in.
Officer Stevick would tell you.
That's my security blanket.
There you go.
Sergeant Burnett would tell you, you know, we've lost some properties where we hunted because.
Okay, that's part of it. They're private properties that no longer want you to hunt?
Correct.
How do we notify property owners that they have the potential for us to do archery?
James. We've done that in the past. In fact, that's, we came up with a list, and if you check the list that we provided, initially we had just an estimate of about a dozen properties that we found that were usable, meaning they weren't between a bunch of houses, they actually bordered our parks. But a lot of them, you couldn't do, simply because of safety zones. We were not going to a 50-yard safety zone, which was the game commission, which is great. But, we still have to get permission from everybody. So when we get people in neighborhoods who see deer eating their shrubs and want us to sit on their back porch, but they have a neighbor, they got eight neighbors within 50 yards, well, chances of us being able to get all of those people to sign on for us to shoot. And the other thing is, a lot of times when you're in those dense neighborhoods, look, with archery folks, I wish I could tell you the deer was gonna drop on the spot, it doesn't. And it's a, and it's a PR nightmare when we have to go and retrieve one out of somebody's yard or back porch, because it happens in some of these programs.
So you've lost properties, so that's one issue. So more hunters wouldn't necessarily, is what you're, in my hearing, you say that more hunters wouldn't help?
Well, you don't have the places to put them. And some of those properties were lost to the hunter property relationship that was built through this program. So, a relationship developed because we placed the hunter in a particular location, and then that family said, you know what, we don't necessarily need to be part of the program, we're just gonna continue this relationship with this hunter or set of hunters, and they'll continue to hunt our property.
I see. So then they just keep the deer themselves, and it's not donated then?
Yes.
But it still serves the purpose of.
Not to the extent that it could, because they're limited to the number of deer that the game commission permits them to take in that scenario. As a hunter in the program, they can kill more deer.
So you don't think that having more people would help because you don't have enough places or enough times?
Can I explain that, Chief?
Yes, sir.
So, when you're dealing with archery, archery is completely different than rifle. First of all, you need your game within, we do not promote anything over 25 yards. And deer's number one defense is its nose. So although you see them in your yard, you're not a threat to them, once you go into their bedroom, the more people you put in there, the more you force them out. So that was the whole that you'll see back in 2017. We minimized because we had such a high percentage of guys who weren't killing a deer. So, the guy's biggest request was, can we have more area? So we cut that from 50-plus to 30. Now, when I looked at the numbers, and I saw the drop to 41 in 1718, there's a reason for that. And I wish the game commission were here to explain it. EHD hit our whole southwest Pennsylvania.
Right.
And let it be, I'm not telling you we had a giant die-off here, but we definitely had a die-off. And I can't tell you that guys weren't reluctant to take deer, just because they were unfamiliar with EHD and how that meat would be as for consumption.
And just explain for the audience, that, is that the chronic wasting?
No.
This is a different way.
Chronic wasting is completely different. EHD is epizootic hemorrhagic disease.
Okay.
And it was brought by a small map that is not native to our region. They say it was brought up from down south. And we periodically get hit with it, but that was the worst we've seen in a while.
So now the chronic wasting disease is another potential way of the deer dying off, but that's not as prevalent?
Not right now.
That's the first case in Jefferson County.
Right. So, you know, that's something that we definitely, the higher the numbers of deer, the more chance chronic wasting can catch on.
Well, it's a case too, if you're gonna put out bait, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, I wish I could, I'm not a biologist, but that's what they're pointing at now, is that if you're putting the bait out, like, there are states that have completely outlawed feeding of deer, and that's from naturalists and everything else.
And that's another concern I have, what you guys were proposing, you're gonna put out bait, everyone's in there 24/7 to kill every deer that hits that bait, you're gonna encourage conservation and.
Well, our job, our job at that point, they're coming there for a purpose, and that purpose is gonna be basically for us to call them. You're right, and, but we don't have it here. I'm sorry?
So you're gonna pull the bait when you're not there?
Absolutely, when we, no, not when we're not there. When our hunt is done, when our call is done, we won't be rebaiting.
So that was kind of not confusing, but I wondered how that would work. So, you're talking about baiting in the parks and in the private places where people have authorized. So, will that serve to draw the deer? I mean, we're talking about from all over the township.
In the winter months, yes, they're out and they're searching for food. So yes, it pulls, that's why the game commission permits it. The game commission permits that specific purpose, that we can draw the deer in and you get them to come in and.
In fact, if I could add to that, one of the things that, I wish they were here as well, but, one of the things the game commission has told us is, this is the next step. They said you're never going to mitigate the deer population with simply the archery program. The next evolution to this process is the sharpshooter program, and they wholeheartedly endorse it.
Well, I guess the reason I asked about that is, you're talking about deer versus vehicle. So if the deer are now traveling across the township, is there a potential for a higher incidence of accidents?
With the sharpshooting program?
No, with.
The sharpshooting occurs, so basically, just, if you look at the maps, the, our accidents are on our state roads, where we don't have hunters positioned. The sharpshooting would be focused more so along those roads. We can, we can do sharpshooting on a lot smaller area than we can the archery hunting. So areas along the 19th corridor, along East McMurray Road, along certain places that may not be feasible for archery hunting, we can do sharpshooting. And that's why it works in high, you know, higher population density communities and things like that. That's the whole purpose of doing it that way. It doesn't, and if you're not familiar with the program, it may sound, you know, counter, but it's using the bait to get the deer to one central location where they can be safely called, where the shots can be taken more safely, and they're not wandering.
I understand that part. I was asking about, they're migrating from my backyard to the park, they're gonna have to cross the road, so I'm just wondering, is that gonna create more traffic?
Well, they're crossing the road, yeah, they're crossing. Hopefully they don't cross back.
Oh no, they have a lot of foliage in the woodlands, so they don't go very far, they're in the backyard all the time.
Anybody else?
And to put your minds, some of us' minds at ease, our intent is not to neutralize the deer herd here, and it'll never be done. You're never gonna be able to do that without doing it 365 a year, and they're not gonna let us do that. All we're looking to do is bring the numbers down to a healthier number. Anybody that doesn't see that we have a definite issue here, they're, they're not looking at it.
Has the game commission talked at all about deer birth control? I know that some states and municipalities have tried.
They don't.
It's not, it's not an all-be-all. I know, isn't it hysterical that you could do that?
Well, they tried it, right? They tried.
They won't approve it.
It's too expensive, right? Game commission will never do it, it's too expensive, too cumbersome, they tried it, and it was a miserable effort.
How do we know how many deer there are? And how do we know?
They never used to serve it when we did the.
We reached the point when we've killed, not called it.
When our deer, when our deer-to-car collisions go down and our property damage complaints.
Yeah, but isn't that sort of like misleading in a sense that, you know, you could have 5,000 deers and, you know, you could have the same percentage if you had 2,500 deers? It's wherever the deer wanna go that you haven't called.
You're absolutely right, but in other places, it has shown to be true. You go to MyLevin and Upper St. Clair, their deer-to-car collisions have decreased. They continue.
How many deer are they calling a year?
Upper St. Clair, I think over 100.
Right, last year?
Over 100.
And how many did we call last year?
Fifty.
Fifty-some, 50.
These municipalities bigger, right, than ours?
No, no.
Where are these complaints coming from? I can honestly say, in 11 and a half years on council, I've never seen a deer complaint come through my email or talking to anybody. Paul, do you get any of them or what? Where are these at?
Well, what we get are people requesting assistance with dead deer. So, you know, we have people who've had deer impaled upon fences, that we've, we've had a couple of those. We've had deer that have been hit and run into people's yards, and so, we're dealing with it from that perspective. We also get, from time to time, we get complaints about shrubbery and that.
Well, that was my question, have you, how many people have you had calling complaint about their trees getting chomped down?
That we get, I won't tell you that's a large number, but we get that, those kind of calls on a regular basis where, where people aren't happy with their.
Well, and as I said at the meeting before, we've reduced their habitat. We do it, and we keep doing it, and we have more plans that are coming forward, and we're reducing the habitat. They're being pressed into smaller, smaller places. You know, I had an email just tonight from a resident who lives actually behind me, the woods in between us, or the habitat that filled up because just about farms and whispering pines was decimated. And they're constantly there, I mean, there's herds, there's, you know, whatever. And, you know, they, this person's advocating for the sharpshooter program. Of course, I, you'd have to get them from our house to your house, but, I don't know, I, I'm concerned about some aspects of the sharpshooter program, I just, I don't know.
Can I address the area real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We being in law enforcement and having to go to the calls where the people are hitting them with their cars, me and my neighborhood, just talking to the people from the school, why do we have so many deer? Everyone, listen, come now, October through January, February, you're gonna start, be careful, because this is when the majority of ours, because of the rut. And they're chasing all the young bucks, or chasing the does, because they don't have a clue how to do it, and they're getting them, they're the reason why we get so many during this period of time. We get them from the residents, we don't necessarily document them, but I can tell you, look, I just lost 15 acres behind me, I lost 30-some acres down to the right of me, and I will tell you, I love my deer. I love to eat them, right? I like a lot of things about them, but, when I can't go out in my backyard without the dog rolling, because I've got 20 cows, and come on up the house, I got an oak tree back there, they're in my yard, it doesn't matter when. I can show you multiple videos of them out on my driveway in the past three weeks. There's apple trees, but they live here now. There, there's construction around us, all that wooded area is gone. Once again, they're not leaving. They adapt, they're gonna stay. Come down and look at my neighbor's arborvitus, they don't grow that way, guys, they don't look like an ice cream cone. The deer eat them, that's, that's basically what happens. But that's where we get the complaints. The major amount of complaints are when we're out on the road and people hit the deer, and that's all, they complain to us like that. They don't necessarily make complaints like, I want something done about this, but, we have too many deer.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, Gus.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Comments from the audience?
Audience, name and address.
I'm Joe McLaughlin on 951 Cagney Drive. I came, I'm not a fan of this culling program, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. I think, I've talked to the game commission, you know, we had a 20-plus-year resident, Dennis Fredericks, lived in our township, raised his kids, he's one of the eight game commission members, he's a world of information, spoke with him yesterday. He said what we're going through is all across the state. But what he did say is, normally when you're hunting, you're not allowed to bait deer in, but they're looking at all hunters being allowed to bait deer in. So it would increase the number of deer being killed by the regular hunters, not just the sharpshooters. So these guys that were having trouble getting a deer can now bait them in. That'll probably be in the next year. He said I could say I had spoke to him, and I think everybody needs to look at that before there's a decision made. I would argue we kill more deer in Peters Township with our farmers than Upper St. Clair and Peters combined. There's a massive amount of deer killed on those farms, for obvious reasons. I think we're taking a kind of a blanket approach to just killing deer, and I don't think it's a good one. I think we need to listen to the professionals and maybe reach out to those, Dennis Fredericks, and he advised me that your solicitor should take a hard look at the Recreation Act on how it opens up township to liability, by limiting people to public land, that you're hiring people to hunt in. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Audience comments on anything else that's not an agenda item? Mr. Books.
Good evening, council. Couple of things tonight. Today.
Name and address.
I'm sorry, Ron Books, 855 Bebo. Thank you, James. Couple of things. First of all, today was the last day that the township would pick up, normally pick up, trees, limbs, other kinds of yard debris. I'm wondering if it's possible to extend that pickup program until perhaps the end of the year, given the amount of damage that occurred over last week?
We're, we're working with the people in that neighborhood, and actually, the Public Works Department will be limb-chipping down in that area probably for the remainder of the week.
Okay, now, if I have a problem with some limbs and things of that nature that were damaged and fall during the storm, do I call Public Works and have them come back?
You, you can do that, yes.
I can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is open, you're saying it could be opened up to the people?
Well, the problem with this is, is that right now, we're getting into leaf collection season, and we cannot do this across the entire community.
Okay.
The same people who do those leaf collections are the same people who perform this function of limb-chipping during the regular season, so.
Talking about the battery.
Yeah, I, I would not want to task the Public Works Department with doing both of those programs at one time.
Okay. Do, do we have a means of notifying other residents in the township that they can call Public Works for disposal of those limbs?
That's what I'm saying, is I don't want to do that. You know, we have a, a program where we, where we charge people to.
Pickup leaves, yeah.
And that consumes a tremendous amount of time in the Public Works Department. I don't think they have the people to be able, to be able to do both of those programs at the same time.
Okay.
People have an extraordinary amount of, of branches because of the storm that came through. They should call in and we'll try to address that, but I don't want to open it up to everyone, because not everyone was affected by that storm.
Okay. One other thing, and I, I'm kind of reluctant to bring this up, but nonetheless, I will. As some of you may recall, I brought to your attention the COVID-19 pandemic before it was realized by most of our country. I'm concerned because it appears, first of all, why has the Wu-Sun viral laboratory been allowed to continue to operate?
Not Peters.
Pardon me?
I say it's not here at Peters, as if we.
Well, it's not here in Peters, but what I'm saying is, consider the fact that our friends in China are currently working on another virus, which I understand makes COVID-19 look like a simple case. But nonetheless, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because I've got some grave concerns about what's going to be happening in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Books. Okay. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, first items in ordinance authorizing the occurring of non-electual debt to the purpose of refunding the 2013 bond issue.
So the ordinance before council tonight provides a framework governing the issuance of bonds that will be served to refund the 2013 bond issue. It authorizes the appropriate township officials to execute documents needed to offer, except enclosed the 2021 bond issue, if the proposed bond issue meets or exceeds the targeted savings set by council, which was 2.5% of the par amount of the existing bonds, net of any cost of issuance. The intent is to market and price the bonds on Wednesday, October 27, with the closing scheduled on or before December 1. The savings that we anticipate from issuing these bonds will use to lower the debt service payment that's due on December 15. In the audience, you have Tim Friends from Jenny Montgomery Scott, Jeff Mills, who's serving as our bond counsel, Mike McCag with RBC Capital, who is the underwriter, so. The show's yours.
Thank you, Paul. Evening, everyone. I'll be brief, I think we all will be brief. Paul gave a very nice summary of where we are. Again, I'm Tim Friends from Jenny Montgomery Scott, and I am your financial advisor. So, I just got a few slides for you to go over, just give you an idea where the market is, what the savings is looking like, and then I'll turn it over for comments that Mike McCag from RBC may have, and, and Jeff can walk you through the ordinance that you have in front of you. So, we just flipped through very quickly, just a market snapshot. This is, this is more of a short-term timeframe that we're looking at. Key things to look at is the top right, which are 10-year interest rates, you've got a 10-year treasury rate, and you've also got a 10-year municipal rate, it's essentially kind of the tax-exempt equivalent of the treasury security. You can just see the rate, where the rates have trended. They've been extremely low for quite a while. They're starting to inch up a little bit, but one of the things that's tamping them down a little bit is at the bottom right, which is tax-exempt demand. It continues to remain really at record highs, the amount of money that has flowed into tax-exempt bond funds is almost outstripping the supply of new bonds. So, though you see in the news, there's talk of inflation, there's talk of rising rates, it's been tempered significantly because there's an awful lot of buyers out there that are looking to buy bonds. Flip. This is interesting, I think, this is just a little longer-term view of that 10-year municipal index that goes all the way back to 2001, and we put on there the dots, those are all the township's bond issues when they were issued, and what that index was when they were issued. So, you can just see the trends, all the way down that big spike there, that's March of 2020, when the markets kind of all shut down. You see how they've dropped, they've gone up a little bit since then, but if you look at the ma, or you look at the map there, basically, township for this issue will be issuing its bonds, at least over the last 20 years, at interest rates that have been lower than they've ever been. So, again, a good time to get this done. Paul mentioned, this is a series of 13, I will go through all of those things for you, those are just the statistics of that transaction. It was a $10 million transaction, there's still 7.27 million left. You can see what that transaction did. It was a refunding of the 10 bonds, the 10 bonds refunded the 03 bonds and provided some new money. The 03s were the original money for the community center and various other things. Final maturity, 12/15/28. We're not extending the term, we're not doing anything else. As Paul said, we're gonna take the savings in the form of lowering your next interest payment. Essentially, that's what you do, freeze up money in the budget. Timing, assuming that everything works and markets remain stable, the timing is that we're gonna price this on Wednesday and close it on December 2. So from your perspective, the rate risk is between now and Wednesday. Once those bonds are sold, rates and savings is locked in. That's where we are if we were selling this today. You see the annual, it's an annual savings, the old bonds debt service versus the new bonds projected debt service, just about $200,000, you'll have a reduction in your upcoming payment, and then all the future payments are plus or minus basically the same. So you're taking all of your savings in the next payment. As Paul mentioned, right now, you do that math, the metric that you, that you look at is the present value of the savings, and you divide that into the amount of bonds we're refinancing to generate those savings. And right now, it's at 2.73%, council's authorized a minimum target of 2.5%, which obviously we would not, we would not go below. For some reason, between now and two days from now, rates pop significantly, and we don't hit that target, we can just be in a holding pattern and wait until we can hit that target to sell the bonds. We don't anticipate that, but I'll turn that over to Mike, and maybe he can give a little bit more color on that, maybe the timing and the process to get those bonds sold, unless you have questions for me? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. It's an honor to be in front of you here this evening. It's good to see everybody, so, thank you, thank you. I don't really have much to say, other than what Tim mentioned, we are going to be bringing the bond issue to market and selling them on Wednesday. The bonds will be very well-received because of the rating that you keep on the township, the AA+ you should feel very proud of. It's a very, very high rating, and. of. It's a very, very high rating, and will be reflected in the lower interest rates, which is then reflected in more savings. We talked about the market. The rates are very good. About a little over this time last year, they hit the all-time lows that dated back to 1957. We're a little bit above that, so you can feel good about the timing. And really, those are the two really key things that I wanted to say. Inflation is starting to present itself, so I think in that respect, it's a good time to lock this in. It's a fixed-rate bond issue, just like you have currently. There'll be a five-year call, so I don't imagine that this will be ever refinanced again because the call date will go out to 2026. There's only going to be two years left, and you're refinancing down, what is it, Tim, to the low ones?
Yeah.
So you're refinancing this debt down to the low ones, which is also...
If existing bonds had 2% coupons, we really never thought that we'd even really be looking at refinancing. And to be able to squeeze a couple hundred thousand dollars out of debt that we never really thought, we thought it was too low to have a refinance, is a nice little bonus.
Indeed. So if there are no other questions?
Mike, out of the 2,500 communities in the state, how many have a better bond rating than we do?
There may be, including school districts, there may be a handful, maybe a dozen. So there's 500 school districts, however many municipalities, a couple counties. There may be a dozen to 20 AAA, and you're AA+, so there's only one notch above you.
Yeah.
And there's really...
We keep telling people that we're on the top.
As you should. And the rating report that was just issued for this bond issue also says a great number of things from a financial perspective, and you can point to that truly.
About a quarter of the friends of Peters Township.
Well, they are not a rating agency. That's all I have to say.
Mike, for the people that are listening, maybe some of council, are these bonds available to the public or the people that are listening, or how would they go about attempting to purchase?
They could be available if anybody would like to call Paul, and Paul can give them my name. We'll do our best. At this point, you know, the sale is slated for Wednesday. So we do have offices. RBC has an office in South Point and in downtown Pittsburgh, so we would do our best to try to accommodate anybody here locally.
I'm sure there's bond mutual funds will buy this whole. It's not that big of an offer.
Yeah, but you know, there are also individuals, and if somebody is interested, we'll do our best to try to get...
What will be the increments?
$5,000 minimums. Yep. Paul? Any questions?
Nope.
So Mike, normally, if you could just clarify that point, it was an interesting question. Who normally buys this type of municipal bond? Mr. Burke was saying mutuals. Is it finance groups like his or something like that?
There's bank trust departments, mutual funds, insurance companies, predominantly institutional buyers, but there will be some, there will be some individuals. Every bond issue is a little bit different, but the majority will probably end up being institutional buyers.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Mr. Reynolds, good evening. So sort of in summary of what the financial advisor and the underwriter just stated is sort of the final piece of this is the not-to-exceed ordinance. It's in front of you tonight. This ordinance is drafted in accordance with the local government in a debt act, which every municipality and school district is governed by. Once you pass it, we'll wait until Wednesday, and hopefully the bonds are marketed successfully by RBC. We'll take that and then do a filing with the Department of Community Economic Development, making sure your financings and this ordinance are all in order. They'll stamp it, send it back, and then the closing documents will be finalized on December 2nd for the closing. Any questions on the ordinance?
Nope.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll move that we approve ordinance number 870, authorizing the incurring of non-electorial debt for the purpose of refunding the 2013 bond issue.
Second.
The session, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have a bond issue in motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Well, back in the day, I did a, it was a Allegheny County Hospital Authority, I think it was like 81, 82. It was a 30-year bond, non-callable, 15% tax-free.
15%.
It'd be great if you could get it.
Non-callable. I had trouble selling those.
Wow. Okay, next item.
That would be nice.
Right, especially now.
Take care.
Our money market wanted that time to 21%.
See you later.
Thanks.
Things are callable, though.
Yeah, it was non-callable.
I can't believe you, Travis.
Okay, next item is to authorize appropriate township official to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania State Police for the purchase of permitting township participation in a municipal automobile theft motor vehicle insurance broad task force.
So we've asked the chief to come to answer any questions that council may have. I know we've discussed this previously, yes.
Any questions on that?
Mr. Ball, I sent, you know I sent him a whole list. I guess some of the things that I was concerned about, and thank you very much for responding to all of them. I asked questions about reimbursement. I asked questions about where the person actually sits, whether or not we had access to the person, which maybe is the answer.
No, we do.
We do.
Yes.
One of the things that's another important aspect, you're suggesting we'll take a part-time existing police position and increase it to full-time, which would increase our budget? And then this position would then be the one who would be assigned to this task force?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're going to ask for a replacement of the part-time?
Yeah, we've already solicited, put out an advertisement for part-time positions, and to my knowledge, I think we have two so far.
We have five, one right now. I know the second one's on the way. I just talked to him today.
The cart before the horse, but that's okay. I know that you have turnover there. So how did we get involved? Did we apply for this, or were we asked to participate?
Well, in my former life, I ran...
There's a lot of stuff you have going on in your former life.
Yes, ma'am. But I ran that task force.
Okay.
For five years. So I'm very familiar with that task force, their capability, what they bring from an investigative perspective, what they bring in regards to continuing to educate and elevate the manner and methods that we use to investigate various crimes, not just auto theft, and the exposure that it gives us to a much broader world in regards to policing. So that's just my personal knowledge. The way the task force functions, they have positions that they offer to municipalities. That's what creates the task force. It's a number of state troopers and then police officers from municipalities and counties, county detectives and the like. In this particular case, the task force head who is here today, Keith Stetter, he's sergeant of the commander of the task force. Keith is familiar with our part-time officer. He knows his work ethic. And the way these task forces are successful is for them to be able to go out and kind of, this may be a little bit of a misnomer, but kind of handpick the people they want, so to speak. Otherwise, municipalities, and I experienced this when I was there, or governing other entities, will send you somebody who maybe they just want rid of because the guy's not working out. They're moving a problem. So that began to change the way task forces operated, the way they pulled people in as part of their investigative staff.
So we should be flattered?
Yes, ma'am, we should. And they're very impressed with Joe Glover. They've worked with him. They know him. And so that's the offer from them, is to pull him in to the task force.
I had asked, and some people, you may or may not know that I send out information about the docket to people, and a lot of people say, well, how many cars are stolen in Peters, Washington, Washington? Why is this important to us? Can you help explain that?
Yes, ma'am. It goes well beyond stolen vehicles, and vehicles is a broad term. You know, vehicles as such, we see a little, you know, five to six stolen vehicles a year in and around Peters Township. But beyond that, you're talking about insurance fraud. You're talking about fraud that is committed with dealerships. In recent years, we've had cases with Honda, Sun Chevrolet, and one other one, can't think of it right now. But they see those types of cases. Auto theft can come in and help us work those cases, track those cars down. Again, they have resources and relationships with entities across the nation. In fact, I know one of the officers that's on the task force, he worked for me when I was the commander of the task force, he still does training to this day, I believe, at a national level for his expertise. And so, you know, just because you're focused on auto theft doesn't mean that that knowledge doesn't expand and create a higher level of investigative ability within our own officers and our own staff. That kind of knowledge tends to germinate, and we've seen that with some of the other officers that we've hired in recent years. You know, Ed Walker, Judd Emery, his skill and expertise having been on the homicide detail in Pittsburgh, Judd Emery, or excuse me, Eddie Walker with the drug task forces. And Joe Glover, another former state trooper lieutenant actually, has been in criminal investigation units at various locations and other capacities. So he brings a skill set, and he will be able to help train some of our younger officers that we have now begun to hire and give them a whole different level of ability to investigate and recognize resources.
So to paraphrase, the benefit to Peters Township is additional education and training for the officers we have here, even though we may not have a large auto theft problem?
That's just one component. I mean, you also have the extension of the auto theft task force to respond in the event we do have one of those cases.
Okay.
You have the resources that they have. We've used them in the past when we have to put a tracking device on a car. We've used them in the past when we need to conduct a surveillance on a specific case. I mean, they have a skill set and an ability to do things that we do not in a uniformed agency, a predominantly uniformed agency.
Does this also cover construction? I know we had the incident of construction vehicle theft a while back. Do they also do that?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going way back, but I think the number was something like, tell me what it is now. It's $43 billion a year, stolen heavy equipment in the United States. It's a major, major industry.
Can you mind if I ask you a question?
No, by all means. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is there anything associated with this program that would really help initiate that most municipalities are dealing with, including Peters? Isn't that people breaking into cars that are either unopened or, you know, they're parked down at the trail and that? Because that seems to be a more pressing issue than we're going to get these attributes. I mean, I'm having a hard time finding the benefit in this program. I mean, if somebody commits a fraud against a dealership, I mean, if this thing didn't exist, isn't there already a framework in effect for you to list the car stolen, and isn't that statewide, and doesn't that go national? And I mean, I'm having a hard time looking for the benefit in all this, when what we really need is somebody to like hit these trail parking lots and whatnot to prevent things that are actually happening. I mean, I read the monthly police blotter, and every month, there's usually a couple of them in there, as opposed to somebody stealing a car or somebody getting defrauded. I mean, I know it's nice to train the officers, cross-train them in different areas, and I have no problem with that. But I mean, and I know this doesn't cost us anything, but I just don't see where we're getting much of a benefit, and it seems like we're going to put a lot of effort into doing this with very little benefit coming out of it, even though we're not going to be paying for it, hopefully.
So the vast majority of those types of cases are solved through collaborative efforts of agencies, because they don't just happen here in Peters.
Which, you're talking about stolen cars, or are we talking about...
Theft from a motor vehicle.
Theft from.
Theft from, not theft of, theft from. That's what you're talking about, breaking into cars at night. Generally, they're not breaking into cars. The biggest issue there is education of our public, which we've gone to great extent to do, creating videos and speaking publicly about it. If people would just lock their cars and not leave guns, purses, computers, expensive sunglasses in their cars, the incidence of that would go down. It's not a police problem. It's a public problem. It's a problem with people just...
I'd agree with that.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not going to oppose it because I don't think it's going to cost us anything. I just think that, you know, it seems like a lot, and I just don't see the benefit. But if you think it's there, I'm not going to rock about it.
Well, Mr. Currie, I think that was kind of where my questions were leading to. What will Peters Township gain from this? The other question that I asked was whether there be any impact on other people in operations. Will we be required to have additional pay-related things happening in the office, the administrative people? Is it going to impact anybody else that's going to...
Paul shaking his head no.
No, I mean, this is an officer on our payroll. The only difference is he's reporting to a different location than others.
Well, there's requirements for how that payroll is submitted that's different from, I presume, what we do now.
Yeah.
Well...
And he may end up reporting to our station for the vast majority of his work. He can report at whatever location is most advantageous to his investigative efforts at that particular moment in time.
Well, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
While I would not be a statistic in your police department, since I've lived in Peters, I've had four cars stolen, all outside of this jurisdiction. How would this benefit me?
Well, if we had a stolen car here in Peters, we would have the task force come in and help work that case. Again, their resources, their reach to other agencies, their ability to communicate and know what's going on within the auto theft world, where that car is likely to go. Sergeant Stetter, he may want to speak to that more than me. Sorry, I'm rambling on because I think I know what I'm talking about in this particular case, having been there, but...
Yeah, I just, sitting back here and asking if I'm going to add anything. I'm here, I'm, you know, sergeant with the Western Auto Theft Task Force. You know, as Chief Grimes mentioned, he held this position for, and quite frankly, that's why we're talking to you, because I know the department that he runs. I know the people that he has. And these positions don't come open very often. I've been here 12 years. This is the second position that has been available. The other one went to Cranberry Township. In that instance, Chief Kevin Meyer reached out to me and asked if the guy that was retiring, one of our former task force officers that worked for Chief Grimes, if he hired him, would he be able to get the auto theft grant? And he would. So I spoke to the authority, and they were able to give him that grant. You know, the councilman here was talking about this as something that's funded by the authority. It doesn't cost Peters Township anything. And the benefits are astronomical. The guys that I have that work for me are, you know, humbly the best investigators in the state of Pennsylvania. If anything happened to my family, they're the ones that I want investigating it. They've all had the opportunity to take promotion and have turned it down, to remain where we're at. They've all solved homicides. Speaking to your point, if your car was taken, I have all of those individuals, and we all respond to that location whenever something happens in one of our partner areas.
One thing I wanted to hear, and I wasn't very happy with being pushed off, because I was going to cut down and say...
Not at all.
And I could call my Pittsburgh police, or I could call here and get help?
Yeah, if a car is stolen in Peters Township, Joe Glover will be there that day, you know, probably within the hour. You know, just this week, we recovered over a million dollars in vehicles. Hertz up at the airport got hit. You know, we have worked with Peters Township in the past, Detective Caruso. You guys had a skid steer stolen from one of your construction sites. We were able to locate that skid steer. We were able to advance the investigation down into North Strahan Township, where a search warrant was executed, and untold amounts of tools were stolen.
Burglaries.
Yeah, from burglaries and other construction sites. The guy was basically building his house out of stolen tools.
And that's one thing unique about this task force. Sorry to cut you off there, but they don't turn a blind eye to everything else. Once they're working a case, if it ends up a homicide, they're very much involved in that homicide investigation.
Yeah, just to give you... Yeah, just to give you an example, we do a lot of stuff federally as well, but we don't, as the chief said, stop that initial auto theft. We continue on with it. We did an investigation in West Moreland County where an individual had gone to a car dealership, as we were discussing, used fraudulent information. He was operating for an organization of Chicago. We ended up using him as a cooperating informant. They ended up going to California and purchasing Rolexes. They went down into Dominican Republic and were doing fraud down there. We followed that all around with our FBI contacts. And that's one of the main benefits here is the Peters Township officer is going to be exposed to so many more contacts within the law enforcement community, both federal, state, and local. And, you know, the sharing of information between the entities is what makes us that good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to say to Chief Grimes, I appreciate you responding to my questions, not only these, but all the other ones beforehand that I've given you. You, since you've been here, you've done a lot to try to build in the police department a career ladder to increase job and enlarge the jobs, enrich the jobs, give the police opportunity to learn more. This sounds like this is another opportunity to improve the stature of the people in the educational and knowledge base of the people in the, in the program. You're saying it's not going to cost us anything, it's going to raise our no variety. So I'll make a motion that we authorize the township officials to execute the intergovernmental agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania State Police for the purpose of permitting the township to participate in the municipal auto theft motor vehicle insurance fraud task force.
Second.
Discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, award of a contract for fuel under the Shake purchasing alliance program. People to go?
Yeah, this is an annual bid that Shake Hog opens as part of their fall commodities. For the past seven years, we have, the low bid has been Glasmer Fuel, who is again the low bid for this particular commodity. So it's my recommendation that Peters Township Council award a contract to Glasmer Fuel to supply gasoline and diesel fuel at the rate stipulated in the Shake Hog Purchasing Alliance bid.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Payroll and bills?
I'm surprised we got four bids because I think last year...
There were, there was only one.
You got one?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, payroll and bills. Payroll of October 15th was about 395,000 with all related costs. Cons payable for this period was about 500,000. Higher payments to waste management and UPMC for employee health, and then the capital projects previously approved. We did pay 25,000 for a compact card, excuse me, cardboard compactor, which is going to be reimbursed through a grant. There's a credit card bill for 17,500. Mr. Jerosky tells me they're all accounted for and appropriate, so I move we approve these bills as submitted.
Second.
Discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any correspondence? There is none. Reports? Does anybody want to talk about a report?
I did ask the chief just to stay for a second and talk about the motor carrier enforcement program. I thought since you were here and this is something new.
Yes, sir. So we were actually scheduled to have Officer Bonzak go to this training in 2020 and then COVID hit and canceled the class, but we were able to procure a spot for him in a two-week training in Harrisburg. He is now a certified motor carrier enforcement officer with the Commonwealth. The next step for him will be to be, become a weight detail enforcement officer. Since he has completed all of his prerequisite inspections to allow him to work on his own, they generally work together as groups, but we have the expertise of him now being here in the township and on duty through his normal shift. But as a group, they conduct enforcement efforts, as you see there, Bethel Park, South Park, Upper St. Clair, Ross Township has participated with us, we have not participated up there. They've come solely out of their own discretion to get their officer exposure. And Castle Shannon, there's an extensive number of inspection violations that have been found by him on our roads, and some of the truck drivers have verbalized to him they were unaware, we now have a mix-up officer here, they're no longer going to drive through Peters.
Good.
They're going to find another route. So it's been very effective and I think it will make our roadways safer.
Another example of the job enrichment that you provided, do we get any kind of benefit as far as when the tickets are written? Do we get any of that?
Yes, ma'am. And those tickets are significant.
Unless they, unless they pledge out to regulation, because some of those guys can't spend, they can't pay eight grand.
Yeah, well, but, but that's an example of what some of those citations can be, five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars.
Wow.
Yes. And we get, I think, half of that, so.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, reports? Anybody want to talk about any reports? All right, miscellaneous?
I have two items, two miscellaneous items. There's information that I placed on your desk ahead of time. The local sheriff counts, applications are due this week. We've been asked by them on to our trail council to send a letter recommending to the county their project. What it is, is to repair the tunnel. So I think that's one that we, that would make sense for council to authorize. So it's my recommendation that you authorize the appropriate official to sign that.
So moved. Second, discussion, in favor?
So this, so this is for them to apply for an LSA?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that in the body of the letter.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree. Thank you.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The second is a resolution and an application for the Peters Township Sanitary Authority. They have a project to replace a sewer line within a neighborhood as well as to increase the capacity of the interceptor along Valley Brook Road, and it's my recommendation that council pass resolution 10521.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hopefully you'll get them.
That would be a good thing, in both cases.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I had one miscellaneous thing.
All right.
So I've gotten some calls from people asking whether Mr. Jerosky quit, and they saw the posting.
He's been a lot of that.
I know. They've seen the posting for the assistant manager position. Would you like to speak to how that came about?
Yes, we had a budget workshop. Council had indicated support for the idea of employing a, another assistant manager. That, of course, would take approval of the budget, but in the meantime, because the need is so, so pressing, it was my decision to go out and accept applications for that position now. I indicated to council that we're going to do that, and, you know, my idea is that we could be in a position that council can, that the manager can make an appointment, we could go through the interview process, and if in fact it's included in the budget, we could get that person started towards the beginning of the year.
So what would be the timing on a job offer if the budget's approved?
It'd be when the budget's approved. I hope to be in a position to be able to do that concurrent with that.
The next day or shortly thereafter?
Yeah, because, you know, the matter, the, in my opinion, the ideal candidate for this position is someone who holds a management position within a municipality right now. And, and so, and if someone accepts this position, you're not going to get them on two weeks' notice. It's going to be 30, 60, maybe 90 days before you have that person begin. And as council is well aware, we, we're having a very difficult time keeping up with the HR portion of this job, and I also would like to be able, as the weather breaks, to have some assistance for Mr. Zemitis in terms of administering contracts, so.
So anything like that would be conditional if in fact you find a candidate that was satisfactory and figure out how long they had to give notice, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes.
Well, that clears it up because people wondered where he was going.
Well, I think it was kind of been, I see more people were concerned that Ryan had either been left or fired as opposed to be retiring, which I would have thought that would have been the natural consideration.
Thank you for explaining.
We're just waiting for the right task force to sign you.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other miscellaneous?
No.
Okay, next agenda, any items, council? All right. Seeing no other items, we have an executive session.
Yes, shortly.
Sure, sure, executive session, famous last words.
You are the king of executive sessions.
All right, other than that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen for coming this evening.